I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin the meeting with a moment of silence. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. Need a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Public forum, seeing no public. Approval of meeting minutes, open session November 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Zero seconds. And I heard there was a change.
A minor typo on page two, just the date in the first full paragraph under chairman's report, it didn't have the month of November in there, and so that was added.
Okay.
That was a minor change, and it's been updated.
With that update, all those in favor?
Aye.
Need to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Local 1769, the International Association of Firefighters, American Federation of Labor, and Congress of Industrial Organizations, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public, and the chair so declares. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Okay, we're in executive session, and we're doing another executive session right after that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, and that's to review and approve executive session minutes from 111, 2021, 119, 2021, 126, 2021, 209, 2021, and 223, 2021. After we finish the executive sessions, we'll come back in open session. We're in exec, I think. Okay, we're back in session, we're going to take care of some business before our six o'clock joint meeting with the Finance Committee. I don't have much to say in my report, except I remind people that there's an election this Saturday, the 25th, that deals with the VOTEC school. New business, act on the request of Joseph Burke to be appointed as a member of Whitman Recreation Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2026, in order to fill in existing vacancies.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Edward Winnett to be appointed as a member of the Whitman Conservation Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2027, in order to fill in existing vacancies.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Joshua Toomey to be appointed to the Whitman Cultural Council for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2027, in order to fill in existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act to appoint John Q. Adams as consultant to the town accountant effective January 8th, 2025. Zero motion.
So moved.
Second.
Zero second. Do you want to say anything about this, Mary Beth, or?
Certainly, just recently at our last meeting, I believe that we appointed Wendy Kavicki as our new accountant. John had served as the interim town accountant, so now he's transitioning over to a consultant. Wendy came from the private sector instead of the municipal, so it's very, it's great that John will stay on, at least through the end of the fiscal year, as a consultant.
Great. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Larry Roach on behalf of the Knights of Columbus to amend the date of a previously approved toll booth fundraiser from October 13th, 2025, to October 11th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
February meeting schedule, anyone have any suggestions? Anyone?
Let me look. Um, choose the 11th from the other one.
Fourth and the 18th?
Fourth and the 18th?
It's pretty good to me.
Fourth and the 18th it is.
And it says February meeting schedule, if we meet March 4th, that is Whitman's 150th birthday.
Well, very good, but we will put that off.
Put that off, per decision in that, yeah.
Never make a decision before it's time, okay. All those in favor of the 4th and the 18th?
I'm in favor, yep.
Is it 4th and the 18th, is that what it was?
Fourth and the 18th.
Fourth and the 18th, okay. And now, welcome the Finance Committee for our joint meeting, and you're all set with Kathy somehow?
Getting her set up right now, sir.
Okay.
Hi Kathleen.
Yes, how are you tonight?
Excellent, we're in with the select board right now, so I'm going to turn you in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to have you with us, Kathy.
It's nice to be here, Carl, thank you.
Okay, and we're, and our guest is the Superintendent of Schools, we thought it would make a lot more sense to have him sitting with us than sitting in the back with those seats. Well, it's an invitation, it's an invitation, menton, all propriety and all of that, and we're going to turn it over now to Sean, who's going to give us an update, and then we'll discuss.
Yeah, welcome. It's good to be here with the Finance Committee, with the Superintendent. We're going to just briefly review some of the revenue and expenditure projections, and then hopefully get into a good discussion.
You know what might be a good idea?
Sure.
Why don't we have people on the Finance Committee just announce their names, so that people out there can know who you are? Yes?
Mike Lindig.
Jason Hutter.
Mike Warner.
Mike Andrews.
Al Cafferty.
Okay, and we're joined with the Superintendent of Schools from Whitman-Hanson.
We also have Kathleen Ortina, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, she is dialed in through our phone.
Excellent.
And she can hear us?
Thank you, Mike. I'm watching you live on my computer, so I can see the video.
Okay, great.
Good?
Yes.
All right, so just a quick review, I hope some of you guys were able to review this from a couple of weeks ago, but this is what we're looking at, our current revenue projections. Step one, we add two and a half percent over our last year's levy, and we add our new growth. New growth is a little bit smaller than what we typically do, that we typically project, but we do think it's in line with what the assessor has given us for feedback. Then we add some excluded debt, which is a form of revenue, but for our purposes, isn't really revenue that we can use towards the operating budget, that's why it's kind of muted out a little bit. Step four, we add local receipts and other sources, so this is our meals tax and our excise tax and those sorts of things. We've been working hard to kind of dial in on these. We tend to start out a little bit more conservative than in the early parts of the budget season, and then as we're getting feedback, particularly next couple of weeks, we'll get some feedback on the excise taxes, so we can dial in on that more precisely, but right now, that's where our numbers lie. And then lastly, we just subtract some charges and offsets. So the key point here is in red. If we look at what we had in revenue last year, and what we have in revenue this year, what our projection is, we're looking at a little over $800,000 in new revenue. You guys have been meeting with department heads, it's important that you understand like the budget message that was sent out from Mary Beth Carter through us, and I'm not going to read them again, but the key points are, and this is two and a half percent increase, we're looking at, you know, for FY '26, step raises that are due to union employees, otherwise level fund, level fund all department expenses, so we're pretty sparse in the message that was sent out to the department heads. Some big budget items to pay attention to, Plymouth County Retirement, that 11.32% is a huge number for us, so we'll be working to somehow try to account for that, because that's, if we only have $800,000 in new revenue over last year, and that's $323,000, obviously that's a big hit for Plymouth County Retirement. Medical and health insurance, we're looking at estimated 7%, but we're not exactly sure where it's going to land, so that's just a placeholder. Whitman-Hanson, remember that it's about a $20 million assessment line for us, so for every 1%, that's about $200,000. So 2% would be $400,000, so 5% is close to a million dollars. It is also important to note that we had discussed as a board earlier that a creative way to get them some revenue that's not currently used in the operating budget is the revenue that we used to fund our OPEB liability. That doesn't mean that we're not going to fund our OPEB liability, it's just that it would go in the queue at town meeting, and we'd ask for the town meeting support to pay for it with free cash. So that would just free up some revenue, extra revenue on top of what we otherwise would give the schools, because we know they're in a difficult situation with their current budget. Their enrollment is down, the Superintendent gave a presentation last week on the enrollment, and they're down, so that's definitely going to hurt when it comes to hold harmless, which means we're not looking to get more money from the state. And really, the probably key piece of tension for us is, right now, they're missing critical educational components in their budget. They don't have an educationally sound budget at Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, so they need more funding, but they're getting less money from the state because this hold harmless situation, so they're in a bind. That's one of the reasons why we thought it might be helpful to come up with a creative way to get them a little bit more revenue. So South Shore VOTEC, this again is just a placeholder, but it looks like their enrollment is down a little bit, so we got some feedback from the Superintendent. He said just to level fund, and it might actually be a little bit less than that, but we're still holding off. The fire department, because of retirements, their budget is looking like it's going to come down a little bit, so that's good news. Solid waste is up, but remember, we bill for solid waste, that's not part of the tax base, but you'll see that in Article 2 as being a bigger increase. And then keep in mind that we used free cash last year, so that puts us a little bit behind the eight ball this year, a little over $500,000. So all told, right now, with our current revenue projections and current expenses as we're calculating them, we're in a deficit situation of about $1.7 million. So based on our current numbers, the preliminary budget numbers indicate that an override is necessary to maintain level services. With that, we think it would be helpful to have a brief discussion about, well, answer any questions, obviously, and then have a brief discussion about the size and scope of the override.
Sean, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions of Sean? Any reactions to what Sean had to say? Ah, sure, why not? Just a reminder, folks, because Kathy is on the phone, if we take any votes tonight, we'll need to do it by voice phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee. I've just got a couple of things. One, on the South Shore budget, they're down 18 students of 165 students, that's a 10% decrease. I understand that there may be some additional increase, but I ran some numbers, and it looks like it could be $80,000, $100,000 less on the South Shore school budget, so I think we should take a close look at that. So there's $80,000 right there.
Thank you very much.
Part sales, we've got a new part company, hopefully, opening by the middle of the year, so we might get a half year out of it, actually, it's going to be a full year, because we start in July, that should be included in the budget. And the other thing is, why are the numbers down at the school when we seem to have more and more people moving into the community? That's just a good question.
We're down 109.
Not 100.
The current eighth grade class is the smallest we have. It looks like, though, K1 and 2 are starting to rebuild back up to the areas that might be sustainable, but those, you know, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 people aren't having five kids anymore, they're having one or two, so that's where we went. But I'm looking at, I mean, I have my second grade class at DuVallis, 54 kids, it used to be 80. Now we're back up to kindergarten being 80, but that are those gaps that, but we're down 109, that's not surprising, because kids are going to vocational education as well, and some private.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sean? There have been some students moved in recently, a good amount of students, actually, and for L students, so students who are learning English as a second language, that's a higher degree of the population that seems to be moving in, not always, but in some case that has been recently, we do receive more funding for that, so there is some offset, but it does look a little bit down.
So if there's 109 less students, is there potential to eliminate a couple of teaching positions? I hate to eliminate positions, but the bottom line is, we've got a tough budget. Thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Mr. Galvin?
John Galvin, High Street. Just a quick answer to South Shore Tech. South Shore Tech has a three-year rolling average of their enrollment, so even though we're down 18, the average isn't going to come down that much, it will, but not that much, and again, we'll know more when they come out. I just have a comment, I'm just curious, and it should affect everybody in this room, why fiscal '25 free cash has not been certified yet? It's now February almost, and we don't have any free cash that we can use. We can't talk about it unless we get it certified, I'm just curious what's going on.
Good question, do you have an answer for that, Mary Beth?
I do, I do have an answer for that. Matter of fact, I came in this morning and asked the accountant if John Adams could check with the DOR on our free cash. So it was mid-December when our tax rate was set, and that took priority. There were a lot of documents at the year-end for reconciling cash and receivables and gateway documents with the Treasurer Collector's Office that really held things up. We're still working on some of that with the consultant that we have in there for the Treasurer Collector's Office, but I was told today that where we have the new accountant in place full-time, that the DOR is putting us at the top of the list, working on it this afternoon. Hopefully, we may even owe free cash tomorrow, don't poll me to that for sure, but they're putting us right at the top of the list for that, because I've been waiting, I want to open the warrant and have articles that start to come in, but we need that number.
Thank you.
Do you have a guesstimate of what that number is?
No, I've asked for a guesstimate.
Okay, thank you.
I think you did.
Okay, Finance Committee people, have you given any thought to override, possible even override, extent of an override, how we publicize it the best?
Well, I watched the first presentation.
Right.
1.7 actually, you know, opened my eyes a little bit. I liked the discussion, I think it was Mr. Andrews that brought up, you don't think of multi-year override rather than all at once, kind of spread it out a little bit. I mean, it's not to go too far, we don't have hot numbers, I think school funding is going to be a budget.
We're already 12.
Yes.
We're in negotiations as well, all four of mine.
Yeah, all five of ours too.
And they're perfectly happy with like two and a half.
Yeah, everybody's happy with that. And I will say that I did, you know, I don't mean to speak out of term, but I did see something in Hanson that they hired PR firm.
They did, yeah.
Override, because I know Justin, you said, Hanson's kind of has to go along with, we have to be in unison with that. Saw that this weekend, I don't know much about Hanson numbers, though.
Okay. If I could, Sean and Justin, Justin and Sean may want to have a conversation.
Might kind of teed it up, so on a multi-year override, I don't think we explained exactly how that works too well. So my thought was that if we had reasonable expense projections out, say, three years, what you can do is override to the level that you would need to be at in those three years, and not tax to the levy in the first two years. So what we do is intentionally leave excess levy, which is not something we've been doing for the last few years, so that we're not hitting the taxpayers at the maximum level. You can do that to an even more extreme if you wanted to pull back a little more and balance with free cash. So it would be one override vote, but it would step up almost as if it were a couple of overrides. That would hopefully ease the burden in, until you get to that level that you need to be at in about three years. It's definitely, it takes a little more coordination, a little more projection. I know when Hingham did it, and the Superintendent's not going to want to hear this, I believe they signed an MOU with the school district to say the school budget will not increase by more than a certain percentage.
Three and a half percent, which is probably pretty tight for them right now.
So there are some ways to try to make it work if you project out that long. It does raise the number you ask for, though, and then does that hurt the chances of a passing? Or do you show that we've done this much work, we know that this will get us through at least a couple of years, we're not going to come back to you again, and here's a promise from the school committee that they won't certify a budget greater than whatever number?
And if you had to guess, just big picture, what the difference would be between a one year and a three year, roughly what would it be?
So we know that it would grow, you know, two and a half percent plus new growth in those interim years, but we know that expenses are growing a little faster than that, so you can do what this kind of growth looks like out a couple of years, but it's all, you know, what does the school give us for projection if we assume we're still in hold harmless? We know that the Chapter 70 growth is pretty limited, and then what do each department heads think they need? What are the known retirements, things are going to drop off? Do we project any added bodies, does that make it harder to pass? So there's a lot of moving parts projecting out three years, but yeah.
For me, I'm thinking, I'd like to have the smallest possible override that we could ask the people to consider, knowing that we're sacrificing, we're demonstrating our sacrifice, and asking them to sacrifice in a way that's a compliment to our own, so that we can just get by with level services. But that is, I feel like that's a different message than, you know, so if we're looking at 1.7, say the override was close to a million and a half, right? That's tight, because we haven't negotiated contracts and stuff like that, so that's super tight. A three-year contract with contracts included would look like what? You know, we're talking over $6 million, over, you know, some bigger number that we're asking the people to fund, and that's a hard ask, I think. I'm not saying it's financially the most feasible, but it's difficult for us to project those numbers accurately, and although it stinks year after year to keep coming back to the people, I think that's the harder route, but it's the better route, to really be as tight as possible, to keep the numbers as accurate as possible, to keep going back with permission from the people if we're going to go over and above. That's where I am right now, but I'd like to hear more discussion about it for sure.
Yes.
Mike Andrews, I kind of side with you, as far as you get out two years and something comes up in someone's revenue, and then you're back to saying, we might need to revisit that at two years, now you're coming back to the people and saying, well, sorry, three years didn't work out, we might need to revisit this, you know, and you're bringing it all back up. So keeping it to a shorter time timeline.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, yes, Kathy.
Okay, so my question is, right now, we're looking at a $1.7 million deficit. It does not include any raises that might be negotiated for any of the different unions, both the five town unions and the school department. It's my understanding that the town administrator was able to secure a grant from the state that allows her to project the impact of different raises on the budget, is, am I right in thinking that?
Yes, Kathleen, that is one of the features that we have with a product that was rolled out to us from Marsha Bohink at the DOR, so yes.
Okay, well, I'm not suggesting that anyone tipped their hand in the contract negotiations, but it would be helpful to know what a 1% raise would cost, because that's not factored into our $1.7 million deficit, and so I think it would be interesting or informative to know what a 1% raise would be for each of the unions, just for the sake of having a piece of information out there.
So Sean, in this, in these numbers, I believe that you have me put in the two and a half percent.
Yeah, we have factored in two and a half percent, and we thought about, just as you said, Kathleen, doing two and a half, and then just adding in progression, like a progression of like 1%, and then what if you went over 2%, just to give us an idea, but we weren't quite sure, we didn't want to quite interrupt the negotiation process, and we're going to contact the lawyers about doing that, but I think it would be a helpful tool, obviously, for us to see if the bargaining came back at this, this is the scenario, this is what it would cost. But we just want to make sure we're doing it properly, you know, so, yeah, we'll definitely look into that. Thank you.
Well, I want to say, I'm very pleased that we're having this discussion in January. You knew my frustration last May, when an override was on the table to get our budget passed, and I think the information needs to be gotten out to the public, there's a lot of education that needs to take place, but we have plenty of time to get that information out now, as opposed to waiting a month or two before town meeting and the town election to start telling people what the constraints are, what the impact is if we do not have an override. So I want to thank you, Sean, for the work you've done preparing this budget analysis, and thank the Select Board itself for being open to the idea of an override in fiscal '26.
Oh, thank you, Kathy, and if the Finance Committee is open to an override, that would be just as good. I want to thank Sean too. Sean has made it his mission to keep our nose to the grindstone during the early parts of the budget-making process, and it's really been a big help. And I know he's worked some with you too, Kathy, so I want to thank you also.
Thanks. It would be nice to reach out to Hanson, I don't know, I know they're using some Opera money for, I thought I read some Opera money, and to potentially partner with them, maybe we could coordinate a way that if they're going to put out a website that looks somewhat similar to like South Shore VOTEC's website, just an easy one-spot, you can click on this just to learn about what's going on, I think that'd be a helpful and intelligent marketing tool. So if it makes sense for us to do it together, why not? Or at least look into it, see if that would be possible.
And I do just want to caution, and I think one of the reasons Hanson's hiring an outside firm to manage this is that there are restrictions on us advocating for ballot questions, so we'd have to be very careful to say that this is the impact, not necessarily what we, as a board, support.
Exactly, and to that point, supporting an override doesn't mean that you want the override to pass. I think there's an important distinction to make. For me, I think we're in a situation where, in order to keep level service, it's obvious that we need an override, but that doesn't mean that you should support the override, you know? You might be in position where you financially can't support the override, it doesn't make sense for you, but I do think that the right choice is to allow the town to make that decision. So put it to the vote, so the town can actually have the say in the vote, you know what I mean, even if you personally disagree with it, as opposed to the 10 of us or 11 of us saying, you know, we're taking the override off the table, it's too expensive, and just not allowing the people the opportunity to make the vote. Does that make sense, that distinction?
Yeah, that's an interesting tightrope to walk, to say that we think that an override is necessary, but we don't officially support one.
Yeah.
But I think the way you put it, we want to give the citizens the opportunity to make the decision on their own.
Sure.
Based on fundamental facts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question, Carl.
Yes.
Mary Beth, when would we, if we would decide to have an election for an override, when would we do that?
We could do it at...
Can't do it at town meeting, because you can't spend money, you don't have.
Right, but it would be similar to what we put for last year.
In the past, you can vote a conditional budget, conditional on an override.
Right.
Passing. So it would be...
It would be the May.
Town meeting to support the budget that includes the override, and then the May town election to support the override.
But then you'd have to have like two articles, one article, you know, like Article 2.
Or sometime in June, call a special town meeting to reduce budgets.
Right, so I mean, you can't, I feel that you should have town meetings say yes on an override or no on an override, so we know before we go to town meeting how much money we can spend, you know, as far as budget increases, because if we base a budget on a possible override and it doesn't happen, we just spent money that we don't have, so we'd have to have another town meeting to lower the budget.
And normally, that's what would happen.
Right, and what we're doing is we're giving the citizens that don't attend town meeting the opportunity to voice their opinion.
That's why I'm saying, if we had the vote for an override, yes or no, prior to town meeting, we know going in, they said no, this is the amount of money that we have to spend, and then we do our budget based on that, and we present it at annual town meeting. I just don't like spending money that we're not sure we're going to get. Actually, it sounds like spending money that we, we're not sure we're going to get, and you end up having a double.
It would be expensive to run a third election in the next, it would be difficult to run a third election in the next couple of months. We've got VOTEC Saturday.
Plus you'd have to have the whole budget broken down, you know, exact to the number that you want for the override. It's sort of doing it backwards. Normally, you would put it out there for article two based on an override, and then if the override didn't pass, you come back and go from there and reduce.
Okay. Sean and then John.
I agree, but to, to Dan's point, I think it's very important that the way that we present this needs to be intelligent and kind of relatively simple. You know, we've gotten some criticism in the past, and I think rightly so, for confusion in the way that we presented these things. So, and even Hanson presented a little bit differently than, than we did last year. I think doing some real research behind the, the most, the smoothest way that we can roll this out with the public so they can understand it and make a clean decision without being confused or whatnot, I think that'd be very helpful.
John.
I didn't hear what Mrs. Carter said, but it's very easy to have a conditional article two at town meeting that if the override passes, it's this, if it doesn't, it's that. And that's actually a very good place to explain what the differences are. I mean, I know we're going to try to do that, but you're going to have several, with an override, you'll probably have several hundred people at town meeting who will actually see if we don't have this override, this is the effect, we're going to lose these positions, they're gone. And that's a good way to get it, you know, to get the public to know. I mean, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying as far as getting it out before then, but town meeting's a great opportunity. And then, you know, if the vote doesn't pass, we have, we don't have to come back for a town meeting because we've had the conditional second one that gets approved in, you know, on basis if we, I mean, that's something that's been done in the past, so.
Thanks, Sean.
And we, we're going to have to have a vote two weeks after town meeting anyway, so to have another vote in front of that after we're having the vote this Saturday, I mean, doesn't make sense to me.
Coming off a presidential year, yeah, it's.
And that's what we had. Last year, we had, you know, without an override and with an override.
Yeah, but it confused a lot of people, and that's why I had, I mentioned it. Right, Sean was right. It did confuse a lot of people. There was more, and it's too much for them to, to absorb.
Lot of columns there.
Yeah.
Lot of numbers.
Anything else? Yes.
Yeah, so this is Mike Warner. I'm actually, I think with you, Justin, I would prefer a, a three-year. The reasoning for that is I would be concerned each of the following years that are coming up, that we have to go back each year. We go through this each year to hope that they, that they would go for another one. And this is, this has been a tough year. We've had a couple of excluded debts. We have another one coming, or probably coming through the social tech. We are hearing it from the departments. We have some pretty major capital outlays that need to be made. And that's not figured into these budgets right now, but if that happens, if we need another building, if we need a, a fire engine, if we need sewer pumps, that would take priority in people's minds, I believe, over a generalized override. If we have a three-year, then we've locked in, and potentially we could build in some of those long-term costs. My last point here is each person, each group that's come in to talk to us, we've asked what's their three-to-five-year long-range plan? And unfortunately, very few departments have come through. Some just stellar job. They are more than five years ahead. I give great kudos, I think, to our sewer department, who has a long-term plan in place, but there's funding that's involved. And I think if that's something that the Select Board can assist us with in bringing that to the attention of the department heads, that a long-range plan is absolutely imperative, but under the financial circumstances the town is in right now and probably for the foreseeable future, needs to be a requirement. Thanks.
Oh, thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you again. I've got one question. In the previous Finance Committee I was on, the Finance Committee had a reserve fund that could be voted out of the Finance Committee. And what we did was we went into a lot of the smaller budgets and cut them back so they had very little free cash at the end. And then if they needed some additional money during the year, like say the planning board needed three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the secretary, it could be voted out of the Finance Committee. In that way, we could reduce the amount of free cash that we had and reduce the budget a little bit. So it's something to think about. I don't know if Whitman has that, but it would be something to think about. You could cut the overall budget, and the smaller departments still have the ability to get their money.
Thank you. Mary Beth, did you have something you wanted, you want to?
Just, I appreciate all the work that Sean's done. He's done a great job. But there are a lot of people out there that are going to find it very difficult to afford an override. And one thing that I looked at is if we, we have a retired couple, they've been in Whitman for thirty years, they own their house, and they're getting sixty thousand dollars a year on social security. Pretty good. They can make it go. The husband dies, the wife loses her social security, gets his. She's down to thirty thousand dollars a year. Now she's got to pay her taxes, the bills, they've lived in the house thirty years, she needs a new furnace, so on and so forth. So that's one part of the residents that hits very, very hard. So I appreciate all the work you're doing. Keep it up. Thank you.
Mary Beth, did you have?
So last year I did that. I, I took the budget from the previous year and what was actually expended, and I went through to see exactly what we could cut on smaller, every department, not just smaller departments. So we did that last year. I'll do that again. I'll look at the requests, and I'll look at what they've spent and their needs, and do the same thing again this year. But even with all of that, it was a tough budget last year, and I'm sure it will help, but it will still be a very tough year. I think what we need to do is before we can come up with, well, how much of an override? We need to answer that basic question. Are we looking at a one-year override, a two-year, a three-year? And then are we making it so departments are, are made whole and shifts are filled and, and the things they've been asking for? Or are we just doing level services? So until those questions are answered, we could put together six different budgets. So I think that we do need to come to a consensus on the length.
Keep asking questions about long-range planning. That's definitely a priority for us, for sure. My concern with the, the difference is if we ask for a three-year override and present it to the people, you know, and inform them about it, and then they say no, then they've said no to three years. You kind of put all your eggs in one basket, and the answer has been given. We, we've kind of been through that in the past for this school's years ago, and it was, it was really hard to swallow for, for people that wanted to add, you know? Whereas I think the alternative is if we keep it tighter and we, we really demonstrate our sacrifice, one, I think people would appreciate that. I don't think they appreciate that year after year we might be coming back. I think that is difficult. The conversation's kind of difficult, and it brings with it a lot of tension, but I do think at least that allows you to have the conversation year after year. We could have one year of a, of a failed override and come back to the table and say, listen, this is how your services changed, this is how the police department changed, this is how the fire department, you were able to feel that feedback. Is that something you want to do again, or is it something that you want to revisit? As opposed to, like I said, you, you ask for that longer override with more money, and they say no, they say no, and that's the answer. I think that's the, I will go with whatever the, the consensus is at the table, for sure. But I think that's my attention, I feel.
Anything else?
Yes, just. If we were going to consider a multi-year, an override that, that would cover us for a couple of years, would it be possible to get thirty-thousand-foot projections for what department budgets look like in twenty, what is it, twenty-twenty-eight, fiscal twenty-nine? And with the schools, to do a high-level projection of what best guess today would be for?
So we can go back to the, the five-year plan that we presented.
Yeah.
And we're pretty accurate for twenty-twenty-eight. I'd look at those numbers again, present them to you folks to say, this is where we were with what we cut last year, and this is where we're looking to project through to twenty-twenty-eight. So we need one more five-year.
Because I think, yeah, at, at least at a, an initial thought, if we're looking at something that should cover us for a couple of years, I don't think it would be, you know, three times what we're looking at this year. I think you, you pull that half a million in free cash back in, you're growing two and a half percent on top of a now raised floor. Hopefully, it's only, whatever, two and a half, under three million.
Okay. When do you think would be a good time to have another joint meeting? Want to do it in a month? Get a little clearer idea then, and we can, and talk.
How about shortly after the schools present the budget to, yeah, probably the biggest question left.
And, and that will be when?
Wednesday, the twelfth.
Twelfth of?
February.
Oh, right before Valentine's Day. Sweet.
The twenty-fifth, maybe? The eighteen is just school vacation week. I don't know if that affects it here, but the twenty-fifth.
You have a meeting on the eighteenth?
Yeah, we have, we have a meeting on the eighteenth. We, we could do a joint meeting on the twenty-fifth.
No, either way.
Why don't we change the, the meeting to the twenty-fifth from the eighteenth?
Sure.
But it might make more, it might make sense for us to have more joint meetings than we, than we're accustomed to.
Yes, we also penciled in a potential for March twenty-fifth. Again, not knowing what your schedule was, but.
Okay, we will, we will do that. We will change the second February meeting to the twenty-fifth. Anything else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Productive evening, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for being invited. There's this control. So I'm making. Sean, please. It's making this meeting tough. Okay. That's good.
Let's see, February eighteenth? I don't have Zoom. Okay, Mary Beth, the only thing left on the agenda is your report.
Okay, very quickly, just today, I received notification that the town received a grant in the amount of eighty thousand dollars from the Community Planning Grant Program. And this is to support the Smart Growth Starter Home Zoning Project. And Justin, I think this is one that you were excited about.
Yes. So this is one of the grant opportunities that was on the table for towns complying with the MBTA Communities Act. This one actually relates pretty closely to that same zoning district. So I worked on this with Kathy Keefe, Assistant Administrator, and so we're, we're pretty happy that this came through. This would allow us to hire a planner to develop an overlay zone, probably in the same area, to allow for an alternate type of housing in the area. So it would be both forty R, which is transit-oriented development, on the sort of same par as the MBTA Communities Overlay Zoning, but in this case, instead of there being a, a disincentive for towns to not comply, there's an incentive for units to be built to this, whatever this zone would look like. So forty R is, is transit-oriented overlay zoning. Forty Y is starter homes.